Good morning and welcome to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's public hearing and public meeting of August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance and I'll ask our general counsel, Mark Silverman, to call.
Chair Carol.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland. Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Mr. Chen.
Yeah.
Mr. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Ginsburg.
Here.
Mr. Goldblum. Mr. Jefferson.
Here.
Mr. Lutfi. Mr. Master.
Here.
Right. Good morning again, and welcome to our public hearing and public meeting for August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Hearing is being held in person at our, in our hearing room at One Center Street on the ninth floor. It is also being held via Zoom for anyone who would like to participate remotely. And it's live streamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to watch the proceedings. And we have a few applications for work on designated properties to review today. And so with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala.
Thanks, Sarah, and good morning, everyone. Start today's Preservation Department, uh, public hearing agenda with item number one. LPC twenty-five dash zero zero five two five. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn. Block nineteen sixty-four, lot forty-five, twenty Cambridge Place in the Clinton Hill Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse built circa eighteen sixty-seven. And the application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Well, my name is Terrence Harrison. I'm the, um, applicant for the project representing the owner, Dr., uh, Charles Granham of Brooklyn, New York. And, uh, what we're proposing to do. Yeah, okay, there we go. Okay, so it's, uh, twenty Cambridge Place in the Clinton Hill Historic District. And it's, uh, historic, Italianate, uh, brownstone, uh, rowhouse. And what we're proposing to do is a rear yard enlargement. Um, there's a little bit of history on this project. I wasn't the original applicant. This was originally filed probably eight years ago. And at that time had received a certificate appropriateness from Landmarks Preservation Commission as well as approval from the Department of Buildings. Subsequently, uh, sadly enough, the, uh, previous applicant passed away and I superseded him. And, uh, the project has been stalled somewhat. It was stalled due to issues with the contractor. And then COVID nineteen, there were some, um, delays there. During that process, the contractor was replaced and also right after we got the permit, their certificate expired. So we actually, uh, requested to have their certificate renewed. This was probably an early twenty twenty-three. And, um, there were several other issues there with some changes in, uh, in, um, staffing at LPC. So here we are now with Caroline and requesting, uh, a new certificate under the portico system. So, um, this is the street facade, which we're making no changes to the front of the building. And block plan. So it's a block of mostly three or four-story buildings. So it's very, very sort of homogenous loss. And our proposal is for the rear yard addition. Now, this is the original elevation on the left and the proposed elevation on the right. So what we're doing is enlarging it to the maximum amount we're allowed by zoning. So that's about, um, fifteen feet from the rear yard and maintaining the rear yard. Um, the top left is a rendering of the proposed enlargement. But the two-story enlargement on the garden level, we're making a two-bedroom apartment on the. Yeah. Okay, there we are. So I think it's there. So, uh, it's, uh, the, the parlor floor is, uh, you know, a three hundred square foot enlargement that will include a new kitchen. So, um, it's a two-story enlargement. And on the back of the parlor floor, there is a eight-foot balcony terrace. So as I mentioned, this project was started some time ago, so it is currently under construction. And the photo, on the, the photos on the right show prior to construction and on the bottom right is, is where it is as of now. So we have removed the wall. We put in steel and we're in the process of starting to, to build the new envelope. For zoning, uh, this is the zoning diagram. So it's the two-story enlargement, just the, the garden level and the parlor floor. Um, the only change above that is to add a terrace above the new roof. So we will be replacing one of the windows in the rear yard and then on the rear second floor with the door. And the floor plans just show the shaded area, the, the areas of enlargement on the ground floor, the, the two-bedroom apartment and on the parlor floor of the kitchen.
All right. And I think you, you have a, a rear yard addition on the building adjacent, uh, to you. And that is deeper than the one that you're proposing, correct? Okay. All right, commissioners, any other questions? All right, let's see if we have public testimony. Um, is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone. I'm gonna turn it over to Gregory Kala to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carol. If you'd like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now so I could see you. And noting that there are no hands raised in the attendees list, I will bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
Okay. All right. So there's no testimony, commissioners. Do we have any final questions on this one? Yes, Commissioner Lutfi.
Really tell how big of an incursion into the rear yard it is and whether or not there's any additional, um.
Maybe if you go back to the block plan.
The block plan? So this is the block down in the, uh, so it's a, it's a fifteen-foot enlargement. So that's the maximum allowed by zoning because we are required to maintain a thirty-foot rear yard in these, and, um, on this block in the site. So, you know, it's pretty much the standard.
So it does not come out as deep as the addition to the left.
So there is an existing addition.
Is it sort of aligned with the addition two buildings over on the right? Would you say?
Two buildings over? Yeah, I think it's probably close to that one. I'm not completely sure. There is a small, uh, addition on the building on the right, adjacent to it, but that's just for a vestibule.
Okay.
It's a pretty pristine, uh.
Yeah, but it's within a building where there are, it's a building that's within other buildings that have rear additions that appear to come out approximately the same. Because I think you're, uh, at least it looked on your, uh, in your renderings, like you came out sort of half the depth or maybe two-thirds of the depth of the adjacent addition, right?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty close to that. The adjacent addition is a little more. I'm not quite sure if it's, as, as far as two-thirds, but it does extend several feet beyond our proposed addition.
So it would sort of maybe be in between the two additions.
It was in between the two.
Yeah.
And it's lower.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's helpful to know, too. Thank you. All right, any other final questions? All right, then let's, Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Master. Would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing's closed and we'll begin our discussion. So this is, as the applicant stated, a proposal for a two-story rear yard addition that the commission previously approved and it has since expired, um, because of a series of delays that, uh, happened, including, uh, COVID nineteen. And so they're seeking reauthorization of this, uh, rear yard addition and a deck. And we'll begin our, and, and the depth seems to be sort of between the, the additions on either side in terms of how deep it goes. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start this one?
I think this is, uh, similar to the last proposal and I, I have no problem with it.
Okay, Commissioner Ginsburg.
I agree. It would have been good to have had a better plan of the rear yard just to see how the addition, but we approved this already and it seems reasonable.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson.
I'm hoping.
Commissioner Master. Okay, does everybody agree or?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Okay, then I think we'll go ahead and make the motion. Commissioner Chen, would you make that motion? So I have a hard comment here. Do you want to use that?
In the matter of LP, in the matter of LPC twenty-five dash zero zero five two five, uh, twenty Cambridge Place, Clinton Hill Historic District. The application is to construct a rear yard addition. Noting the proposed work was previously approved by Certificate of Appropriateness nineteen dash eighty-three forty-three in two thousand and seventeen, but that approval, uh, has expired. Uh, further noting that the building's, uh, style, scale, materials, and details are mainly featured that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Clinton Hill Historic District. I recommend approval. Finding that the construction of the rear yard addition will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed work will not be visible from a public thoroughfare, that the two-story addition will be modest in scale and similar in height and depth uh, to other additions that exist within the block, that the simple massing, fenestration, brick cladding, solid-to-void ratio, and neutral finishes of the rear addition will be in keeping with the materiality, scale, and character of the secondary facades found at rowhouses within this block and the historic district. And that the proposed work will not diminish the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Clinton, uh, Hill Historic District.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg. Would you second that motion? Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
Commissioner Master.
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you and good luck finishing the project. Move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number two, LPC twenty-four dash zero five two nine six. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn. Block eighteen eighty-seven, lot eleven, one twenty-nine Vanderbilt Avenue in the Wallabout Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse built eighteen fifty-four to fifty-five, and the application is to enlarge a rear yard addition.
Good morning, Commissioners, Richard, Larry, uh, LPC staff. I will present the scope of work and the owner, Wynne Fitzpatrick, is here in person and the architect, Errol Crawford, is here remotely uh, to answer any questions. So the proposal is to extend an existing two-story rear addition, um, by two foot eleven inches. As you can see from the aerial block plan, uh, this is on the western Vanderbilt Avenue. Uh, there's a series of houses in a row with near identical, uh, depth rear additions. Apart from the, uh, which runs through the north, be on the left side of where the arrow is. And, uh, except for the building on the right, which has a deeper and regular, uh, two-story rear addition that you'll see in the photographs. Um, also, as you can see, just to the top of where the subject property, there is a break in the building line, uh, where there is some visibility of the upper floor, uh, only the rear facade. Uh, here is just, uh, an elevation of the proposed, uh, rear addition. Uh, the existing wood clav- cladding, uh, will be maintained and a series of multi-light, uh, windows, uh, and doors, uh, proposed. And so the existing, uh, addition is four foot six and they're proposing to run it to seven foot five. Uh, this is the visibility from Carlton Avenue through the break in the building line. And as you can see, only the top floor of the rear facade is visible. Uh, now we're looking south at the adjacent property where you can see the, uh, two-story rear addition of the neighbor. Uh, the top floor is not as deep as the bottom floor. And as we continue to scan, uh, towards the north, uh, this is the existing rear addition, uh, rear facade. Uh, and as we're running up, um, you can see there these, uh, sort of atypical sort of wing walls that project, um, uh, forward from the, uh, rear additions. Um, the architect, who we had the plans, uh, thought they were about eighteen inches. So the owner has confirmed that that was inaccurate. Uh, they're actually about thirty-six inches. Uh, we thought that we would have to extend them because we're proposing to, or they're proposing to extend the rear addition by thirty-five inches. But that means that, uh, there's enough of the existing wall where they were build it. It will, uh, they will not have to extend it. And these are the other, uh, rear additions, uh, within the road, looking north. Uh, and then just a top view, uh, looking down at the rear additions, just to show you the sort of consistent depth. And that's really the reason why we're here is that we're, they're proposing to extend beyond this consistent depth, uh, within the road. Uh, just to show you the floor plans at the basement level showing the, uh, extension. And, uh, just to note again, the, um, the north wing wall will not need to be extended based on the current, uh, confirmation of the, uh, the current length. On the south side, um, there against the very large addition of the adjacent property, they will be extending the wing wall just to the extent of the top floor, not the bottom floor. Go back. Just to be sure there. And then, uh, the current top floor that we were shown. By the extension of a, uh, the rear addition and then the construction of a rear deck, which we consider as staff. And I'll pass you over to, uh, Wynne Fitzpatrick here.
Okay, thank you. And so if you could just, um, be clear and, um, just if you can clarify, does it project out to align with the neighbor to your right?
This, no, this was most recent in the past four blocks.
Come up to the microphone and just state your name.
Um, this is, this is actually the plan that you guys asked for, but this, the most recent, but that's not the plan we were asking for. Um, and what we wanted is there's a, well, this, 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 this option right here would be about right here. And then we were hoping to have an extension that would go out to the neighbor's wall right about here. Uh, and that, that was where we got into a conflict with you guys. It does not go any further than the neighbor's wall here. It comes out about ten feet this way. And then this one would be to that level right there.
So it would be, have a sort of jog in it?
That's right.
So it would align with the neighbor on one side and then?
Neighbor's on both sides.
Okay.
Could we speak that in the photo, please?
Um, if you've got that, if not, I, I have papers with me, so.
Sarah, it's not clear if it aligns with the neighbor of the mass of the extension or the deck. That there's two very different things. But, okay.
Okay, so I think what, what you're saying is that that two-story rear addition will come out deeper on what we're looking at the left side than on the right side. No, go back, Richard.
Go back, it'll come out right here.
Right there.
Here. This side will come out right here.
So it will step back.
The massing will be irregular.
The massing will be irregular.
The little porch, does that come out in the?
The deck comes out further, but the deck, I think, is, I think Richard said was eligible for a staff level. Is that right? Okay. All right, so it's, as I understand it, the sort of that plan, which shows the deck is kind of the footprint of the, what the addition would be, right?
That's right. It'd be deck on this side and the addition would be on right up. I have it, I do have it on.
Yes, let's pass it because I think we do need to see what we're talking about.
And it shows the bay window on there. That's a little bit older version. There will be a bay window, um. Is, this construction cost to do it and the bay window is going to be astronomical, so.
It looks like if the small extension on the right side, on the south, extends only be up to the neighboring.
Right, absolutely.
And, and to the left, at what point does it go?
The left, we go up.
No, no, the, the, the pop-out.
That's right.
No, but the pop-out.
The pop-out goes up to the neighbors.
And on the left side, on the, no, just the pop, just the pop-out, just the part that extends forward. How far does it go to the left?
From this wall right here, just under eighty.
Sorry. It's gotta be shaped like an L. It's not straight. So I'm saying, where is the projection extent?
Right here.
There.
Right here.
There, okay. So essentially, the size of that smaller piece is just enough for the, it's a vestibule for the doors. That's as large as it is. The door vestibule.
The house is twenty-five feet wide. This is about eleven feet.
But your door swings are right there.
That's right.
The door swing into that piece that juts forward.
There's a door here. Oh, we will have a door. The door will actually be on, over here.
Oh.
Point out this way. And that's showing on the back drawing.
Yeah, I'm confused. There's no deck because the door goes the other direction. It doesn't go forward. Okay.
Okay, so I think, um, yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
Is the extension of the party wall have to do, what's the function of the party wall? Does it have to do with fire?
Well, party wall on this side is masonry.
Yeah.
We do not know what party wall on this side is. It will be masonry.
No, no.
That's fire.
The question is, what's the reason for the party wall extension? Is it for fire reasons or with just aesthetic?
I do not know because I was not around when the houses built.
That's a, that's just a question.
Yeah. It's part of, part of what we're doing is making this fire. Up here, fire, and that's when you see the yellow, the yellow siding.
I think this is a modest request, this, that you're asking to push out a few feet beyond where you are. And you already have additions that do come out deeper, both the one that's immediately next to you, but also further down the row. Another one comes out as far as that party wall, that projecting party wall. So my sense is that this is modest and probably appropriate, but I don't think we can act unless we know what the actual proposal is. And I think there's some confusion here because that plan isn't right. And I'm not sure that plan accurately shows the neighbors' party walls and the party walls. So it's, I don't know what to do for you, right? Because I realize this means you're gonna have to wait another month to come back to us. But I think it's just without having an accurate plan, we don't know what we're voting on. That's the problem. Yes.
I would add, it would be good to have a plan of the rear yard, including the adjacent buildings, so we could really understand.
I believe I have that in table. The, uh, if you go back to the, I know what you, I realize that we're not, not able to, uh, answer some of this today. Go back to the, the one that shows the, um, the, the yellow siding right here. Okay, so from this point to the carriage house behind is exactly thirty feet. So that's, that's why we're not going further than that. You know, there is thirty foot limit on that. So this, this is, this is the thirty-foot line right here.
I, I appreciate it's all in your head, but it needs to be in the presentation.
No, I mean.
Right, because we are acting on, on the materials presented to us. So, um, it, it seems like, uh, and, you know, in that aerial view, you could see uh, two or three doors down, their rear addition comes out to that party wall, that projecting party wall. So if you're coming out that far on one side and this far on the other side, it, it may be perfectly contextual. It's just, I think we don't have an actual drawing that we can act on. So I think we're gonna take no action. We'll ask you to continue to work with Richard and Jared to put the presentation materials together so we can bring you back as early as we can in September. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, do we want to take testimony? Do you want to see if there was any? Actually, I don't think anyone signed up to speak, but just before we close the hearing, we want to have Gregory take testimony. I don't know if there's any, we want to just ask if anyone wants to.
Any participants in the Zoom would like to offer testimony for this item, please use the raise hand function. Okay, we have one person with their raised hand, uh, Errol Crawford.
Yes, I am the architect, uh, for the applicant Wynne Fitzgerald. The addition is actually the first submission of drawings to which Landmarks does, is in possession of. Actually shows, uh, full site plan of the rear and elevations, uh, all of which are in, within allowable zoning for the Department of Buildings, of course. On the north side, which shows a masonry wing wall, we are not, we are not extending the extension beyond those wing walls by perhaps at most, uh, it, the condition of that wall is, is in question, but it may be at most six inches beyond. But actually is more in line flush with the wing wall.
Okay, thank you. And I think, you know, conceptually, we sort of see that that aligns with others and may be contextual. But as we said, we have to have a presentation with materials that we can act on and that we all know. We all have the dimensions and the drawings, um, and all, uh, are, know what is exactly being voted on. So we'll, um, the staff will help you continue to put that presentation together. All right, um, and so Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing's closed and we'll see you in September.
Right, we'll now move to public hearing item number three, LPC twenty-five dash zero zero three nine six. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block one forty-five, lot twelve, one twenty-five Cambridge Street, AKA ninety-five West Broadway in the Trebekah South Historic District. This is a Gothic Revival slash Italianate-style hotel building built in eighteen forty-four to forty-five with additions built in eighteen fifty-two to fifty-three, eighteen sixty-seven to sixty-eight, and eighteen sixty-nine, and altered again in nineteen eighty-seven, eighty-nine. The application is to install signage and light fixtures.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, I'm Mary Dirix, the preservation consultant for the project. This is the old Cosmopolitan Hotel at Chambers and West Broadway. Um, it was actually built in, um, eighteen forty-four to five, raised in the eighteen sixties, added to, in, um, in, next door to the, in the eighteen fifties, another wing in eighteen sixty-nine, so it's been through some changes. There's just one, um, hotel sign on the building today at the marquee on West Broadway. This is the north wall, um, which is where, uh, we're proposing a sign. Uh, it's the rear wall. Um, the wall is, is painted and has been altered, uh, multiple times, including uh, different window openings and a big, uh, uh, vent duct on the, on the left. Historically, there was a lot of signage. Uh, this was a real crossroads and there was a, a terminal and later an L. Um, I'm showing you, uh, larger, uh, uh, historic photos, but we're gonna go through them quickly just because they're hard to see. Um, here it was, um, plastered with signage, uh, around the time of the L. Um, and the top right, um, shows the, let's see, do I have the right? Yeah, the top right shows the north. Um, and the top right, um, shows the, let's see, do I have the right? Yeah, the top right shows the north wall. Um, at that time, there was a, a taller building, uh, that is now gone, and there's a new building there now, Seraphina. Uh, at the bottom, um, that's across the street, um, to show you that really there was a lot of signage historically on these buildings. Um, the, uh, top left shows, uh, placards on the, on the, uh, um, on the, the building, uh, directly behind the, the hotel, and also what it looked like in the, in the 1930s. Uh, this is the, uh, marquee when it was on, um, Chambers Street. Now it's on West Broadway. Um, this is a time of designation when things were much quieter. Uh, there's the, you can see the north wall and the, also the north wall in, um, in 1999. Here's rendering of the signage. It's painted. This is a drawing. Um, as mentioned, it's at the rear wall. Um, it covers less than 1% of the wall. Um, the individual letters will be two and a half feet high by one foot wide, and it will be lit by two exterior fixtures at the top. Um, these are, this is the, uh, a section and also another, uh, elevation. Um, the, uh, fixtures will project two feet from the facade. Uh, they're gonna, uh, the, uh, the wiring is gonna go in, um, through the, uh, the, the interior, uh, roof of the parapet, so, uh, there won't be, uh, uh, external conduit. And, um, this, these, uh, fixtures at two feet, uh, they're on the seventh floor, you know, and, uh, they project, it appears that they project less than the, the, the duct on them, on the left. Here's a nighttime rendering. It's not meant to be brightly lit. Um, there's no lighting, um, at, uh, from the bottom. The nighttime rendering shows some lighting, but, uh, you know, it's a rendering. But mostly I think that's the rendering for, that's the lighting that would be coming up from the rooftop, um, deck at Seraphina. So no lighting on the bottom, only lighting from the top, um, going, um, down. Um, just going through that, uh, the, this, um, situation where hotels have, uh, uh, signs on their, on their secondary facades, either their rear or their, so, their sides. It was very common historically and is still pretty common today. Here are more. Um, the, um, the one on the Gerard Hotel was recently approved by, um, LPC. And he, these are historical ones. They were hard to see, so I've circled them. Um, but, um, in any event, it was something that, that happened a lot. And that is the full presentation. Thank you.
You, Commissioners, do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Uh, do the lights then project over the property line and do you need permission from your neighbors or is the property? I couldn't tell from the drawings you have.
You know, they, they, I don't think so because, uh, the duct, they don't project as much as the duct. So unlikely, but this actually is, um, all one lot, so it, it's all one property.
Commissioner Jefferson. Oh, sorry, I thought you had a question. Anyone else? All right, let's see if we have testimony. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak on this item? All right, noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Gregory Kala to see if we have any, uh, remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carol. I see a few hands raised in our remote attendees list. The first we'll be hearing from is Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society, New York. Christina Conroy, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. We'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Uh, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, founded in New York City in 1966, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our 19th and early 20th century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual and scenic landmarks, interiors, and civic art. Now, the Victorian Society supports the proposed painted wall signs and light fixtures on the secondary north-facing facade of 125 Chambers Street. There is a long history of painted wall signs on 19th and early 20th century buildings, and they were often seen on the side facades of hotels. The work will not damage or conceal any important architectural features. It's easily reversible. The proposed light fixtures are small, and painting them to match the wall will minimize their visibility, but we have a couple of questions. First, the rendering makes it look like there will be light fixtures at the base of the sign as well as above, but there aren't any notes explaining this. Uh, we can imagine that they're to be placed out of sight on the roof of the two-story building of 125 Chambers, but this should be clarified. The second, we couldn't find any notes stating that there will be no exposed conduit to provide power to the two light fixtures to be installed above the sign. Notes should be added to the drawing stating this. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HCC appreciates this painted signage and is happy to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board One recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
You. Is there anything you'd like to say in response?
Thank, thank you, organizations. Uh, just briefly, there will be no lighting down, um, uh, at the bottom lighting up, and there will be no external conduit.
Okay, thanks. All right, Commissioners, any final questions on this? All right, so let's move to close the hearing. Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll move.
Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing's closed, and so we are looking at the painted wall sign on the north-facing elevation of this building, um, with two light fixtures to illuminate it, to project two feet, um, and won't have any exposed conduit. Commissioner Master, would you start this one?
Yeah, I, I, I think that, uh, it's appropriate. I, I like that, um, uh, the Victorian Society and other groups have supported this as well. Um, it's a secondary facade, and, uh, the signage is relatively modern, uh, modest, and, uh, it reflects the history, um, of, uh, painted signs on the secondary facades of hotels. So I think that it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Jefferson.
I guess the proportions of the letters are just perfect, and it works very well with the vertical alignment. It's appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Chen?
Same, yeah.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Uh, it's, uh, appropriate and it's very nicely done.
Commissioner Chen? I mean, Chu, sorry.
Uh, appropriate. I just want comment, I think it's elegant. I prefer the elevation as opposed to the rendering. I just prefer the lettering when it's finer, not so wide in its font. So it's more like your logo on the canopy.
All right, Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I think it's perfectly historically appropriate. It seemed, uh, it's probably just the rendering. I would have gone with a, you know, a lot of a dark gray or something instead of black because I think it's, uh, would be a little more appropriate, but I, I can certainly approve this.
Okay, all right, so I think we can do a motion to approve this. Commissioner Master, would you make that motion?
The matter of LPC-25-00396, 125 Chambers Street, AKA 95 West Broadway in the Tribeca South Historic District. Um, a Gothic Revival Italianate style hotel building built in 1844-45, 1845, with additions built in 1852, 53, 1867, 1868, and 1869, and altered in 1987, 1989. Application is to install signage and light fixtures. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca South Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed painted signage will be installed on plain painted masonry at a secondary lot line facade and will not damage or obscure any significant architectural features. That the building historically featured a variety of signs, and therefore the painted sign lettering will be in keeping with the history and character of the building. That the proposed signage will be modest in size relative to the facade and will be consistent with traditional application methods of painted small signs historically found on buildings of this scale and type in commercial and manufacturing districts. That the light fixtures will be simple in design and finish to match the adjacent masonry and will not call undue intention to these installations. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or historic district.
Thank you. And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
I'll second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Mr. Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. And if you, as you do finalize it, if you do think about the thinness of the font in com, uh, in response to Commissioner Chu's comment, that'd be something we'd welcome. Okay, great, thanks. We'll move to the next item.
All right, next item is public hearing item number four. LPC 24-11718, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1009, lot 46, 130 West 57th Street, 130 West 57th Street Studio Building Individual Landmark. This is a studio building designed by Pollard and Steinem and built in 1907 to 8, and the application is to alter a storefront entrance vestibule and install cladding and signage.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, my name is Pierre Tabuz, and I'm accompanied by Jillian Carlisle today. Uh, we'll be talking today about the exterior signage on, uh, 130 West 57th Street. Um, here is a map to show its location and its context, and here's an original picture of the building when it was connected, uh, with 140 West 57th Street and through the cornice. Uh, here you can see its location at its current date. Um, here's a, a picture of the current building as it exists today with the area of work, um, highlighted that we're talking about today. Um, as you can see, we're touching just a small area on the bottom left corner of the building. Um, here is an original picture of the building where the storefront was, uh, is located today. Um, here is a picture of designation time of the building, where you can see, uh, there is, uh, metal cladding covering, uh, structural element that's coming from above. Um, here's some other designation pictures of showing more detail, uh, the metal cladding element that we're looking to enhance with the new, uh, store that's coming in. Um, here's just an example of a building that's just a, uh, like a block away from the building that also have exterior cladding with, uh, signage. Um, here's the storefront today. Uh, you can see, uh, the metal plated, uh, stairs in silver with the floor-mounted handrail as well as the metal brush panel that has a mirror on top to cover this structural element that's coming in from above. Um, here's some closer pictures of this element. You can see that, uh, slanted gate that comes down that's waterized, uh, that we're maintaining. Uh, here's some closer pictures of actually the, the, the different in planes and depth that we're have at the existing uh, storefront that will be addressed in a minute. And here's some interior pictures as well as a closer picture of the entryway where the door is actually located to the right of the vestibule instead of the front of the vestibule. Uh, you can also see the diamond plate, the handrail, and all the other elements in the vestibule. Um, here's an overall elevation of the building as well as a, um, highlighted elevation of the existing storefront, uh, where we have the silver metal brush played, uh, with all the other elements previously mentioned. And what we're planning to propose to do is to change the vestibule to just a square with the main entrance in the, in the front. A black, uh, anti-slip metal replating of the stairs with, uh, handrail mounted on the glass. It is no longer mounted on the floor, as well as tiling in front of the uh, metal brush panel with backlit H-brass signage. Here's some existing details of what the, uh, metal brush panel looks like, and here's sort of our proposed details, uh, that we're trying to infill, uh, the space. You can see here, we're using the existing connecting points to anchor, um, our signage or exterior signage, but we're actually maintaining the metal brush behind it. Um, here's the, it in plan, uh, as an existing condition. You can see it's not perpendicular. It's actually an angle with the door on the right, and here's our proposed plan where we're aiming to have the door in the front with the handrail, new cladding on the stairs as well as a new signage. All of it is within the property line, so stays within those infillments that we showed earlier in the picture. Um, here's some elevations of the existing condition, uh, where you can see the full glass going toward the ceiling, uh, and as well as the door to the right. And here are some proposed details where we're actually maintaining the van that's in the front to go throughout the vestibule. It's gonna give you more of a continuous look. Uh, and then the door in the center, in, in the center, uh, with the anchors on the point and the handrail anchored to the glass. Um, here's the materiality we're looking to use. So glass for the vestibule, um, black anti-slip, uh, cladding for the stairs, the green Olivia tile, uh, and clatter collection for the, in front of the metal brush panel. Then for the repairs that we're trying to do in the moleons, uh, just use black as existing and H-brass signage with back illumination. And here is a final render of how everything comes together. You can see the door in the center, the stairs, the handrail, the signage, and the, uh, tiles as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions, Commissioner? Jefferson, no questions? Okay. Let's see if we have public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carol. If you are, uh, if you would like to testify on this item, please click the raise hand button now. Okay. I do not see any remote participants with their hands raised, so I will bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
All right, let's close the hearing. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So will.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg. Would you second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, um, Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this one? They have a sort of pre-existing condition. The building wasn't originally built with storefronts, and so there is a structural column over which a storefront was added at some point historically. And this pan, this, uh, column has been concealed in a variety of ways, mostly metal panel. They're proposing a, a tile that would also serve as a sign for their storefront.
Yeah, um, so I think the work being done here is quite minimal. I don't have an issue with the, the, the stair being proposed. I think it's a new stair. It's diamond plate now. It would be painted to match the existing dark finish of the storefront. Um, the door itself, I think the applicant might want to provide more detail because the elevation doesn't match the rendering. It's, it's like a stick-built system, very fine with glass units. This is one of those conditions where it is a very refined facade and, and articulate with details that seem to be in good condition based on those pictures. My biggest concern here is just that the detailing of the, of the tile work, to me, when I look at it, they keep the existing panel, but it's being clad to it, and it will, it will project off the face of this, of, of, of its adjacent materials, especially the base and the sides. So I, I don't think it's quite resolved, and that's my concern here. Um, and that will be a big effect to this facade. I don't think it should project out this piece. It's an accent. I can see that, but it really needs to, to sit within the historic storefront. So, um, and I don't have an issue with this, this view. I think it's, again, the devil's in the details. It needs to work, to work into this historic facade.
Thinking if they don't have the metal panel behind it, it could sit within the frame.
It could. It could. So the way that it's being detailed suggests retaining it and applying as eclipse onto it, and I know that it'll all come out a couple inches, and so that's going to be the problem.
Okay, great. Thanks, Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I, I think that they did a nice job here, but I have to agree with Commissioner Chu. And if they can resolve that, I, I think it would be appropriate.
Okay, and we can have them do that at staff, with the staff. Commissioner Jefferson?
I, I can understand the impulse of the designer to make a, a statement. And, and I think it works and it's removable.
Commissioner.
I'm torn on this one because I, I think it the simple elegant one would be just as good.
Okay.
I'll leave it to others to decide.
All right, Commissioner Ginsburg.
The, in addressing the valid concern that Commissioner Chu has raised, it means removing some of the existing material. And so I can argue with either way. In general, I, I think besides working out that detail, things are fine.
Okay. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I think the Commissioners raise a good point, which is, damn if you do, damn if you don't. I am concerned about, you know, obviously, if you want to make it flush, that means that you have to touch the historic material there or the diamond plate there. So either way is fine, but I, I think that Commissioner Chu made a valid point, which is that it's not projected, it's better. But obviously, I think the staff should work with the applicant and see make the, the best determination. I think she should be painted black with the, you know, the stainless steel stuff.
Okay. Commissioner Luthfi?
I'm basically, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Chu's perspective on this. I, it's actually a lovely design. And, but I, I think it would look a little more refined if it could be set back and actually in framed. So that would be my recommendation. Okay.
And Commissioner Chapin?
Sorry.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree with Commissioner Chu's perspective, and I think it's fine except that it needs not to project as he indicated.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
The, the historic character of this storefront, which is what we're charged to protect, is that the column is a three-dimensional object, meaning it returns into the corner. What's being proposed is a surface treatment to just the facade. So fundamentally, I expect it to be three-dimensional. They're retaining the side, which is to be painted black. If you just return the corner and painted the front black and put the signage on it, I think that would still be, that would be acceptable.
Oh, so to just keep it black?
Well, I'm just saying it's a three-dimensional object, so I'm objecting to the two-dimensional value. So if you reduce the tile work so that it was in fact a frame and a poster box feel with a three-dimensional black column behind it, then it's okay.
Right, I get it. So it would read as a three-dimensional black column, and the tile would just be reduced. You have a little border around it, and then it.
Frame and shrink it so it doesn't look like it's the whole facade.
Yep. So it reads as a sign.
Becomes a sign element.
Yeah. Okay.
And maybe a projection might be okay then.
Right.
Yeah.
If, as a sign. So I think what we'll do is we'll make a motion to approve it with the condition that you work with the staff on the detail to either make it set with blush within or to reduce it slightly to make it read as a sign that projects slightly. Commissioner Chu, would you make that motion?
We've closed the hearing.
Oh, sorry. Didn't I, didn't I do that already? We've been in our discussion. Okay.
In the case of LPC twenty-four, one-one-seven-one-eight, one-thirty West Fifty-Seven Street, the one-thirty, one-thirty West Fifty-Seven Street Studio Building Individual Landmark. It's a studio designed by Pollard and Steinem and built in nineteen oh seven to eight. Application is to alter storefront entrance vestibule and install cladding and signage. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the work will not damage, eliminate, or obscure any significant architectural features. That the re-cladding of the stainless steel at the steps and infill panels at the storefront will eliminate an unsympathetic alteration. That the new commercial entrance door with minimal framing featuring a metal band aligned with the exterior transom bar will be deeply recessed and will harmonize with the historic infill in a contemporary way. That the cladding with, that cladding the steps with black diamond plate will integrate the entrance with the black finish storefront. That the proposed signage lettering will be small in scale, similar in placement to typical window signage, neutral in color, and will not detract from the historic storefront features. However, the design will be worked out with staffing to be modified so that the tile cladding on the front facade be revised to reflect more of a poster box feel and that the existing black steel plate cladding behind be seen from the front elevation and be finished in a matching black paint from the front face to the returned face. And that the applicant work with staffing on the exact size of that reduction and review the details as such.
Commissioner Master, would you second the motion?
Second.
All right. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen? Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luthfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move to the next item.
The next item is public hearing item number five. LPC twenty-four dash one-two-zero-zero-one, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block thirteen seventy-four, lot sixty-nine, seven eighty-five Fifth Avenue in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is an apartment building designed by Emory Roth and Sons and built in nineteen sixty-two to sixty-three. The application is to lower parapet walls and install railings at a setback terrace.
Good morning.
Good morning. John Verson from Sawyer Verson. So, Commissioner, Commissioners, thank you all for taking the time to hear this application. Oh, closer to the mic. I'm used to yelling. Sorry. Anyway, thank you all for taking time to hear this application. There's been some, there's been some previous approvals at staff level for this project. Specifically, some new windows and the lowering of the guardrail on the parapets. Here we are. So this is seven eighty-five Fifth Avenue and just some photographs of the exterior. Our work is within that orange ribbon that you see up on the eighteenth floor. On, so what you're seeing is our area of work, but above that, a project from two thousand fourteen done by Diller Skid Video where they basically rebuilt the penthouse and the structure above and had extended the windows to floor to ceiling. I defer to your staff for the full history of applications that have happened for this building. There's even one pending down on the first floor. This is just simply a floor plan showing what has been previously approved at staff level on the left and what is proposed on the right, which is really in the notes upon the upper right about the lowering of the parapet and the extension of the glass rails. This is the west elevation facing Grand Army Plaza. On the left is an elevation showing what was previously approved, which is the windows and then the slight lowering of the guardrail. On the right is what we're proposing now, which is to lower the parapet itself, three brick courses, and to extend down the glass ramps. Here are photo montages. Again, on the left is what has been previously approved. And on the right, it's a, a little indistinct, but that's where the lowering of the parapet is happening. And then here are some enlargements of both the elevation and the photo montage above is what's been previously approved at staff level, which is again, slight lowering of the red guardrails here. And here is what we are proposing right now, which is to lower the parapet three brick courses and extend the glass down. And the photo montage on the right shows that as well. Just if you might note, the tall glass railings on the renovation above us. Similarly, for the north elevation, which faces the Pierre Hotel. Again, what was previously approved is on the left, and what we're proposing is on the right. Some photo montages. I understand these are an aerial view, but it was very difficult to do a street-level montage that would kind of show the scope of work. Here again, on the top, what's been previously approved and what is proposed below it. And a little bit of slightly visible work on the east facade. If you were walking west on Sixtieth Street towards Fifth Avenue, you would see the slight area where the work is visible. Again, what's proposed on the left, previously approved on the left, and what is proposed on the right. Some blowups of that view on the left is what's previously approved and see. Okay, previously approved and what is proposed. These taller railings are that renovation, substantial renovation above us. And then here it is again, what's proposed. This is some large-scale detail sheet illustrating the existing condition. This is what's there right now, which hasn't been touched. The middle is where we were lowering the railing by three and three-quarter inches and refining the glass. And on that's been previously approved, and on the right shows the lowering of the parapet by three brick courses and the extension of the glass rail. One difference is that here, previously the railing is the center of the parapet. Here it's been moved to the inside face for code reasons so that we don't have a step in the midst, middle of our three foot six inch code-required railing lines. A second feature here is there's a small fin that's been added for lateral stability. That fin starts flush with the top of the railing and adds another three three inches at the base for a total of five inches. You can see it in plan here. The fin itself is the same width as the metal upright, which is why in elevation you don't see any change in thickness from here to here. Finally, just a comparison about what's existing. These are, we believe, the original nineteen sixty-two, sixty-three railings with the glass parapet at full height. And then what we're proposing below, more expansive glass, less metal framing with a better view towards the park. That's my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have questions? That's one. Okay, let's see if we have any testimony.
I've just been advised just to emphasize once again, and it's, this was part of an appendix, that it is a no-style building, which I think is actually stated here, formally stated.
All right, great. So in the designation report, identified it as a no-style building, meaning a non-contributing building within the district. All right, and I'll note that there's no one to speak on this item in the hearing room, so I'll ask Gregory if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. If you'd like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now. Okay, I'm seeing one person with their hand raised, that being Zainab Tiran from the Friends of the Upper East Side. Zainab Tiran, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. And please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Carroll and Commissioners. The Friends Preservation Committee finds the current application appropriate. We don't object to the lowering of the parapet wall and adding a taller glass and steel guardrails on the seventeenth floor terrace. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any other attendees with their hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Eight recommends approval, and I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thank you. So supportive testimony. I don't know if there's any other final comment you'd like to make before we move to our discussion.
No, no final comments.
All right, all right. Commissioners, if we don't have any other questions, we'll go ahead and make a motion to close the hearing. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing's closed. And so this is a, a building, as we've heard, it's described as no-style in the designation report, and it has a series of setbacks. And the commission has previously approved replacing railings and windows at these setbacks and the applicant, including glass railings, and the applicant is proposing to lower the parapet and install a taller glass railing. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you like to begin this one?
Sure. I think that this is approvable. I think it's not going to be perceptible really from the ground, and I think the change is comparatively minor, so I can support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Luthfi?
I agree completely. I can approve this.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Agreed, appropriate.
Commissioner Master?
Appropriate.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Actually, improved, I believe, appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Appropriate, although I'm not sure Emory Roth would be happy having the building called a no-style.
I know. As I said it, I was reading that and thinking I. It does seem a little in conflict to have an Emory Roth sign, Emory Roth building, a no-style building, but Commissioner Chen?
On that note, it's sometimes good to blend into the background, and I think in this case it blends into the background.
Okay, so I think we can go ahead and approve it. Commissioner Chapin, would you make the motion? She might be frozen.
Commissioner Chapin?
Sixty-two, nineteen sixty-three. Application is to lower parapet walls and install railings at a setback terrace. I note that the building is not one for which the Upper East Side Historic District was designated. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed modifications to the parapet and guardrails will harmonize with the varying conditions previously approved by the commission at the setback terraces at the upper floors of the building. That the modest lowering of the parapet at the top of the primary facade and the installation of taller steel and glass guardrails will not call undue attention to the condition when seen in the context of previous commission-approved facade and guardrail modifications due to the significant height. due to the significant height above street level, and that the proposed work will not detract from the Upper East Side Historic District.
Great. Thank you. And Commissioner Lutfi, would you second that motion?
Second. Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. Good to see you. Right, we'll move to the next and final item.
Right, last item is public hearing item number six, LPC twenty-four dash zero three eight three three. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block thirteen eighty-two, lot one, eight fifty-seven Fifth Avenue in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is an apartment building designed by Robert L. Bean and built in nineteen sixty-one to sixty-three. Application is to re-clad, to re-clad the base of the building.
Good morning, folks. My name is Matthew Pordon. I'm the architect working on this project. We are proposing to re-clad the base of the southern facade of the building and the west facade of the building located at eight fifty-seven Fifth Avenue. Eight fifty-seven Fifth Avenue was a building that was built in nineteen sixty-one to nineteen sixty-three. It was a Robert L. Bean project. It's very similar to the white glazed brick buildings that march along Fifth Avenue. What we are proposing to modify is the southern facade, brown floor level, and the turn onto the Fifth Avenue side, the western facade. Historically, the building had four main components to it. It had white glazed brick as part of the skin. It had a limestone fenestration. It also had metal glazing for the windows. And lastly, this red granite accent that occurred within the front of the building. We did research on the project, trying to figure out the best way to clad the building in a desired material. Throughout the history of the building, the southern facade was once clad in white glazed brick. But over the years, the red granite had extended over onto that southern elevation. The red granite is now deteriorated, and we are proposing to put a limestone base with a granite, a gray granite footing on the bottom of it to help with the conditions of New York City and the to prevent some of that deterioration that we've seen in the past. During our research, we noticed that the front of the building that did have the main red granite on it really only existed within the pocket of the entryway where my mouse is. The forward columns, which are now in red granite, appears to be in a limestone clad. So our proposal would be to take that detailing and bring it back to that type of fenestration. As you can see, as you can see, the existing condition has the red granite that extends all the way along the south elevation. Our proposal is to take that off and install the limestone with the granite base. We'll extend it all the way to the corner, but inside the courtyard, we're going to maintain the red granite. And as I had mentioned before, the red granite had extended in later years onto the front columns of this building. Our proposal is to take those front columns and to re-clad them back in limestone. We feel that this is an appropriate solution for restoration and rehabilitation of this building. I also have a sample of the limestone that I'm going to pass around right now. Limestone is an Indiana limestone, and it will have a machine finish to it.
Using this photo, the accent where the granite was originally was on the recessed portion?
That's, that's correct.
And it doesn't exist there anymore.
Doesn't exist there anymore. I can show you the historic photograph.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood it right. Okay, so it was the recessed piece that had the red granite accent. And the rest was actually, appeared to be a limestone toned material.
The forward columns were in that limestone, appeared to be in that limestone plating. The planter and the base inside that little portico was the red granite.
Okay, so the planter was red granite?
On, on the west elevation, yes.
On the west elevation only. That's. So the original condition had red on the recessed portion with the windows and on the Fifth Avenue side of the planter. But did it, I don't know if we know if it wrapped around. And the columns were all limestone or similar material.
So the goal is to restore it to that condition?
That's correct. However, on the south elevation, there was exposed white glazed brick that we do want to use the limestone plating for.
Okay.
And this photograph here of my mouse, as you can see where those columns, those front columns were once clad in a limestone. And in the back where it's dark, that was, we believe, the red granite.
So, so the concept is that the courtyard, the.
That, that's correct. Yes. Yes. And then as the southern elevation extends, we would be restoring the, the removing the red granite and adding limestone where the white glazed brick once was.
Okay, so it's to remove the granite on the columns, which was a later addition, not original, to restore it to a limestone material. And then on the side facade, which is this south facade, removing the granite and some white glazed brick and replacing that all with limestone as well. So there's a limestone base all the way around the building, but the planter will remain red. Is that right?
The, the planter on the southern elevation will remain red. Yes.
Okay, yes.
Why didn't you replace on the south side with white glaze brick? Why are you proposing the granite?
Well, it's currently covered by the red granite right now. So the existing image is the rendering above. This is what it looks like now. The white glazed brick extended here, but it was platted by others in this red granite. When we removed a portion to do a probe, we discovered the white glazed brick. And the white glazed brick is unfortunately unusable due to the application of the red glazed, the red granite that was installed. We felt that limestone would be a better appropriate base for the building in terms of just the architectural quality, the, the context along Fifth Avenue and general care and maintenance for the building.
Okay. All right. Yes, Commissioner Master.
So I guess what I'm curious about is why, I understand that you're re-cladding it, but why are we retaining the red granite where we are retaining it?
Oh, we believe it's historically appropriate.
Because that's where it was originally.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so maybe we didn't know that either.
That the, where the red granite is being retained is where it was historically, even with the limestone, when there was a limestone base.
Yeah, I mean, some of it's speculative because we have, you know, kind of grainy black and white photos. But also just worth noting that, you know, I think the applicant is proposing the granite for that base course, which again, I'm not sure that's restoration. I think that's more for durability. I don't know there was evidence that that ever existed. So it's still kind of a mix up of a few different materials.
I'm a little confused. So the original was brick. No problem.
No, the original building, it looks like was a white brick building. And at the base, on the south side, on the, where the entry was, the white brick came all the way down. And at the corner where there's a sort of arcade, that was limestone. And the recessed portion and the planter were red granite. And
Sure.
And so they're, so since then, the, everything's been replaced with red granite. And so the proposal is, and the red granite, so the red granite for most of it is modern, except for the recessed portion on the Fifth Avenue side and the planter. And so the proposal is to take that modern red granite, replace it and, and the portion of the white brick, which has been damaged by the red granite that was applied over it, and do a consistent limestone base and just keep the red where it was originally.
Could you go back? Sure. So what is shown as limestone on the south facade used to be brick? That's what I understand. That's correct. It used to be white. And the granite was not there below. Do we know if the brick went to the ground? We didn't, we couldn't find any evidence of how low the brick actually went. We do have one image of the garage next door where the white glaze brick does go all the way down. So we do assume that was what the condition was. I just have a question. What is the material of the vertical brayed out elements on the facade? That's, that's limestone. That's limestone. Yes. So you're proposing to match that though? That's correct.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Chen.
And the existing red granite on the vertical, are those still the column that you are seeking to retain?
That, that's correct. Yeah. So the, the proposed rendering shows where we want to retain the red, which is what we think is original.
On the left-hand corner, on the left-hand corner, where there's a column, it seems. Yeah, that one. Why, why are you changing that one?
Well, the. That's the wall line that's on the column. The column is limestone on the right. The red is back on the wall recessed.
So it was, it was red, was red granite. It was red granite up above.
Yeah. And it's maybe in plan, you can show where that red is.
Yeah, it's a little difficult to show it in elevation. I think we have, actually, we have, we have a better photograph that actually shows that, that configuration. Which is here. So.
That's that back.
Yeah, so that's that back wall where my cursor is. The columns up front were re-clad in the red granite sometime in the past. And those front columns are the ones we want to restore back to limestone.
But they'll keep the red on the inside wall.
And the, and the planter base too, which is red, which we believe was original. Let's see.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, I understand the, keeping the recessed pillar because of its original condition, probably, probably in the original condition. But the the planter, just that one section, it seems kind of unlikely that just one section of the planter was clad in that. Yeah, I, I thought you said you weren't, you weren't so sure about that or?
No, I wasn't sure about the white glaze brick going all the way down outside of the photographic evidence of the garage next door. But judging from the photographs that we have, we didn't see any evidence of the red granite extending beyond that corner on the south elevation.
Oh, but, but can you see the planter in any of the photographs?
It's difficult. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so the, the planter is a little bit of a question. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, let's move to public testimony. And I'll note that there's no one in the hearing room to speak on this item. So I'll turn it over to Gregory to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. If you would like to testify on this item, please click the raise hand button now. Okay, the first person we'll be hearing from is Zainab Taran from the Friends of the Upper East Side. Zainab Taran, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Carroll and Commissioners. My name is Zainab Taran, speaking on behalf of the Friends of the Upper East Side. Friends Preservation Committee contends that replacing the red granite facade with limestone constitutes an improvement, aligning with the lighter color palette identified in a nineteen sixty-five CD record. However, we question whether the texture and scale of the original white glazed brick or a contemporary material replicating its aesthetic would be a more suitable choice for the building's nineteen sixties design. And soon you will hear, we also concur with the Historic District Council that if the use of color was important to the architect's vision, the applicant should consider restoring the way they appears to their original pink, thus retaining some color on the facade. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HDC finds this proposal to replace the red marble plating at the base of this building with white limestone plating to be inappropriate because the use of both color was integral to Robert L. Bean's architectural intent in this case. Speaking about this building to the New York Times in two thousand, Bean said, "At the time, I thought, let's lighten it up." The Times notes that here, Bean, quote, "indulged in a favorite proclivity, color." In fact, the building's wavy piers, now painted white, were originally pink. HDC believes that this building deserves more color, not less. We note that when asked what he'd do if he could redo his work from the nineteen fifties and sixties, Bean told the Times, "I'd like to use more color." HDC asks the applicant to honor that intent by leaving the red cladding at the base of this building intact and restoring the piers to their original pink. That way, the existing base will relate to the piers as it should. Certainly, the Upper East Side could use more pink. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from John Graham from the Victorian Society in New York. John Graham, I promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. We comment on this proposal for a modernist building for the same reason we did so last month for a similar application. In that case, the proposal was to replace the original rose granite base at sixty-nine West Ninth Street with gray granite. We argued that the design integrity of the building and of all buildings should be respected and that the original choice of granite material and color was deliberate. The Commissioners had mixed views on this. The applicant was willing to consider retaining the original color stone, but the commission approved the proposal as presented. Here at eight fifty-seven Fifth, we needn't speculate on the architect's intent. We have it in his own words in a New York Times interview conducted by Christopher Gray in two thousand. We thank our colleagues at HDC for finding this. The architect, Robert Bean, was happy to have a client interested in the design, and he was given a freer hand and budget. He created a building that's anything but the plain white brick standard of the era. It has bays, insets, and a series of wavy, undulating piers. "Let's liven it up," Mr. Bean said at the time. This livening up included the use of color, something the architect was interested in. Thus, the use of a red granite base and the original complementary pink color of the undulating piers. We urge that the red granite remain and be repaired or replaced in kind, and that the owner be encouraged to repaint the piers in their original pink color. To conclude, it's our position that buildings, even of this date, deserve to have their architectural integrity respected. We preserve for the distant future as well as for today. If we continue to strip away the details and make these buildings what they are, future generations. future generations will lose the ability to understand and appreciate an important period in the history of architecture and development of our city. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised. So I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Eight recommends approval. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carol.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you like to respond to any of the comments we've heard?
Yeah, I, I, I do want to reiterate the fact that we are trying to go back to the architect's original intent. Here's an example of the white glaze brick that we exposed. We do want to keep the, that splash of red, that little bit of lipstick in the front of the building where the original architect's, uh, design had it located. We are taking the approach that the white glaze material is not a proper material to, uh, to be on the ground floor because of its ability to deteriorate rapidly. We, we feel as though it's, um, important that the building maintains a, a stable level of aesthetic throughout the years and the deterioration of, um, of, of, of the white glaze brick and even the planters on the west side. You could see that it's just falling apart. So, uh, that's our position that we, we really do want to make the architect who originally designed this image, uh, prominent again. You know, we do want to restore the, um, his, 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 his aesthetic and design part two. And at the same time, we want to make sure the building can still continue to last and, and, and live on the Upper East, uh, West Side, the reset.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
Is the question, you cannot restore the red granite? The question, the question is, can you not restore the red granite?
Well, we're having issues finding sources for the red granite and on the, on the southern side. Uh, we, 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 we can't find a, a good match. Um, the matches that we do get tend to be off in terms of figure and in tone. So, um, we felt that the limestone would be more appropriate. It's more homogeneous and it, it does create that, that planter arcade aesthetic of just the red. And we can harvest.
But they're restoring, you're repairing or restoring or keeping anyway, the red granite that was original.
And, and more importantly too, whatever we can remove from the southern elevation, we are going to harvest that and make sure that we can use that for future repairs since the stone source is lost.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg.
There was discussion in the testimony about pink piers that have been painted white. Can you discuss that? Is that your understanding?
I believe what they're mentioning is the, the front, uh, columns that we are, uh, proposing to put in granite, I'm sorry, in, in limestone. And I think, uh, they, they, they referenced that at one time these were painted pink. I don't see that, uh, as something that would be a heavy lift, uh, if, if that's something that, you know, you'd want to, us to explore a little bit.
I think that the, the Times article that was referenced, in fact, states that the lozenge shaped elements that you're saying are limestone were a pink color. And they were, they were painted over. In fact, those are painted.
Okay.
But not.
Gray. So the building had a very different look. It had the pink stone of the facade as well.
So, uh, yeah, I mean, and we're not proposing to have any scope of work up on those, those fins.
Okay. All right. Any other final questions? All right, let's begin our discussion. Commissioner Luffey, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion? Yeah, all right. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed to this. Um, thank you for kind of trying to walk us through the various layers here. So this building did have, I guess, a different look. The recessed portion at the ground floor on the west facing facade had red granite, some remains today in the recessed columns and the recessed sidewall and the planter. And modern granite has been applied to the exterior columns and to the south facade, um, one portion of which had white brick at one point originally. And so, um, the proposal is to replace all the modern red granite with limestone, keep the historic red granite where it existed. And then the limestone base would also have a gray granite base for durability. And, um, so I think, I just want to comment a little bit. This is also described as a no style building in our designation report, which means it's a non-contributing building. Um, and this was the case, um, on the Upper East Side. In the Upper East Side Historic District at the time of designation, uh, many of the white brick apartment buildings were identified as no style. And from a regulatory perspective, what that meant was that the staff could approve demolition under a certificate of no effect. And that is still the, the case today as long as the full Commission approves a replacement. And so over the years, the Commission has approved re-cladding portions and even in some cases, the entire facades of white brick apartment buildings. And, um, and the way that I think we need to think about it is whether the change in material, um, in relation to the rest of the building has an effect on the historic district. And so the applicant has pointed out that there are many buildings, um, in this historic district and along Fifth Avenue that have limestone bases, um, that they believe that the south facade columns were limestone originally. And, um, they're proposing to replace the modern red granite with a limestone that they believe is harmonious with the historic district and with the building above as it is today. So we'll begin that discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
I, I was going to make a comment that I'd like to see the white brick replaced, which can be done if properly detailed, could be durable. But given what you've just said, I can accept what they're proposing.
Okay. Commissioner Chen.
Yeah. I, I, I think this is, uh, yeah, because the lack of, uh, photograph of what previously existed. I think the, the testimony, uh, suggestion about, you know, to the degree it's paying some accent, uh, I would love to hear what the, what the rest of the Commissioners.
I think they're retaining the original granite where it exists.
Right, yeah. But, um, on the, the base, on the, the, the planters, that's what I'm thinking. Uh, but given the lack of material, I could also understand the matching, uh, granite. It's just, the source is lost, so.
They are keeping the planter red granite. That was your question? Okay. Commissioner Luffey.
This is a sort of interesting situation. It's a building for which, uh, that, you know, was not relevant to the designation, although, you know, time has passed and now these, some of the buildings of these era, of this particular era when this building was built, you know, are being recognized for, uh, their design and the contributions that they do make. So, uh, to the, not only our historic history, but, you know, just in terms of, uh, you know, an architectural history and the general landscape of the building. So I appreciate, um, with that in mind, what the applicant is trying to do here. So on the one hand, uh, the building would like to honor, uh, some of the original most, you know, the remaining features of the original building and return what it can to what had been there in the front. All of the changes seem to make sense to me. So remove, remove the granite from those columns, replace them with limestone, which certainly speaks to the building. And retain the granite, uh, planting bed. I am very sympathetic to, about the, um, the fact that the, these white tiles no longer exist and, um, that in thinking about the context of what is around this building, uh, from a material, building and material standpoint, that the limestone not only works well within the context, but it actually speaks to the, the elements of the, the building itself. And so what I think could happen here is, you know, we have, there's restoration where it makes sense and then the what the applicant's doing is visually tying this building together so that it's going to be a little more cohesive looking. And I think it will not only respect what was there initially without being slavish to it because we don't have all of, um, we don't have the documents that really clearly tell us what was there. But, um, but respect it conceptually and, and tie this together in a way that, um, it's going to work well in the landscape. So I can approve this.
Commissioner Chu.
Um, yeah, I think this is a tough application because we don't really know what the existing design color scheme is. This is really about color right now. Um, and it's been altered apparently significantly. So to that point, the limestone, I don't know if there's any limestone on the existing building. It's kind of hard to tell. Uh, but it is a neutral color. So to that, I would say then, I think it's appropriate because it's in keeping with the light color of the south facade originally. It's a replacement of material. As to the, to the, to the planter, I guess it's a question on whether that was historic fabric or not. Um, but it does retain some sense of the red color. We want to keep some red. That's the only thing left. Aesthetically, it's a trouble for me because I would have kept the, the, the granite base and run it horizontal the whole way, which I think would make sense in the design to collect the base of the building. Um, but if this is about retaining that, the only red left, I can see the appropriateness of the proposal. It's unfortunate. It's a little bit, um, collagey. But I think overall, the intent is to calm it down and give it more of a light color overall and hit the ground that way. So due to the lack of historic evidence and the fact that it's not a specifically contributing building to the landmark district, I would say appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I, I think the applicant did a good job in trying to return to, um, as closely as they can the colors of what was most likely original and going with a neutral light shade. And then retaining the pop of color, the red granite in the planter and then the recessed area, which I think also speaks to historically what was there. So, um, I can find this appropriate as well.
Commissioner Jefferson.
The lens, and I'm looking at this, uh, is saying, this building is 60 years old. And what they're proposing is really a documentation of changes of material over time. And this is the best they can do because we, the presentation wasn't clear enough for me to be able to make really the clear decision of what was there, what was not there. It wasn't didactic enough. But I could accept what they propose as, as a, as a kind of, um, layer, urban layer of materiality over time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, I, uh, thought originally that I felt like, you know, it would approve the re, the recess panel and then suggest that they just, because they weren't sure, extend the, um, not, not have the, uh, you know, planter be, uh, red granite. I, this, some of the discussion really has, you know, raised questions in my mind about what was there originally and what the architect intended. And though it is not a building for which the district is designated, you know, it's, you know, it is, uh, you know, a reasonable piece of architecture by an architect who did many other things in the city. So anyway, I, I don't feel comfortable because I feel that perhaps a little more information could, you know, be produced on, uh, what was actually there, uh, originally. And if so, then if there was more, uh, of a reddish color in the bottom building, I'd like to see that replicated in some fashion, not necessarily with a, an exact replica. And I understand the issue about the red granite. Okay, so anyway, uh, on this one, I think I'm gonna, I'm just gonna vote no. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I think, you know, based on the photographs that we have from, uh, time of designation, I think that it is clear the columns are a light color. And so given that and, uh, and we know that the south facade was a light color, that the granite is, the limestone seems appropriate to me. And, uh, retaining the, where we know the original red granite existed, um, will preserve that bit of color that was part of the original intent. So Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to approve? Thanks.
With regards to LPC 24-03833857 Fifth Avenue, Upper East Side Historic District, an apartment building designed by Robert I. Bean and built in 1961-63, application is to re-clad the base of the building. I note this building is not one for which the Upper East Side Historic District was designated. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not eliminate or damage any significant architectural features, that the use of light colored stone plating at the Fifth Avenue and East 67th Street ground floor facade will recall the white brick and limestone plating originally found on the building base, that the new cladding will be keeping with materials found at the entrance and the ground floor of other buildings of this type and age, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Upper East Side Historic District.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner, uh, Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All right. John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carol.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Nay.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
Commissioner Luffey. Commissioner Master.
Aye.
Seven in favor, one opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. All right, that concludes our public hearing today, August 13th. And, uh, we will, um, be not meeting for the next couple of Tuesdays and we will resume our hearing schedule for the fall on September 10th. So we'll see everybody on September 10th. Thank you Commissioners for a great summer and for everybody showing up and attending as we get through these summer hearing days. So thank you all and we'll see everybody on September 10th.